I'd like to call this meeting of the February 7th, 2023 Finance Committee Meeting to order at, it looks like it's 6:45 PM.
Do you have it?
First order of business is the consideration of claims. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of claims.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $268,252.8 payroll liabilities for January 27th, 2022, and January 13th, '23. That's not right, but how come that's like the dates?
Oh, 1/27/23.
It's supposed to be '23 and '22. Anyway, in the amount of $687,422.77, for the total of $955,674.85.
So moved.
We have a motion, second, I presume, sir?
Second.
Mr. Larson has a second. Do we have any discussion?
Somebody probably need to change it to '23.
Yes, we'll change that. Is that 12/27? 12/27/22 and 13/23, is that correct?
It should be 1/13/23 and 1/27/23.
Okay, so instead of '22.
Sorry, I apologize for that.
No worries.
Well, I started reading it and I'm like.
I'm still used to typing '22.
Your Honor, me, it's nice to take the fall for that, but I'm the one that sent it out and I should have.
I didn't notice till I started reading.
To the dungeon with you.
And I'm like, this can't be right.
All right, being no, there being no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? No, no, I vote aye. Motion passes. Is there anything else additional to come before this committee?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We'll adjourn this meeting at 6:47.
Would Councilmember Borders lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then I will start with the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity to serve the city of Riverton and the citizens of Riverton. We ask Thee that as we meet tonight, we'll have our minds enlightened. We will be able to know the things which would help govern the city in a way that is wise and will benefit our citizens. We thank Thee very much for the oyster we've received. Ask that it please bless us that as we go forward, we can be effective in our way that we associate with each other and be kind and patient. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilwoman Lindsay Cox.
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Dean Pronto.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Kristi Salisbury.
Here.
Mayor Tim Hancock.
I am here. I declare we have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Who wants it? Arm wrestle for it? Councilmember Pronto has the second, or has the motion. Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I vote aye. Motion passes. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments? Anyone in the audience? If you're wanting to talk to the council about an item that's scheduled for a public hearing, you have an opportunity to speak during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on another item may speak now. If you would like to do so, I'd ask you to come up to the microphone here. This meeting is being broadcast on the Internet and on the television, so please tell us your name and any organization you're affiliated with it. We'd like to hear from you.
I'm Randy Carlholm. I'm the new CEO of Big Horn Cooperative. I'm making a tour around of all of our communities that we have locations in. I wanted to introduce myself, possibly hand out some business cards, so if there's ever any issues, you would have a direct way of contacting me. Wanted to tell everyone that we want to be good neighbors, good corporate citizens, and we want to support our local communities. So if there's any way that we can help, support, or do something, we would certainly ask that someone reach out to us to do so. And we're here to be a part and hopefully help and contribute. So if that's possible, I'd like to give you folks some business cards.
Sure, you can come on up. That sounds great. Thank you for coming and introducing yourself.
Okay. This has my direct contact information on it.
Thank you.
Anything comes up at all, please reach out to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I wasn't quite expecting, I'm down to one left. You guys get a flip.
I'm gonna give it to him.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Randy. I took a guess at your last name and I was, I was close.
Okay.
So.
It's Swedish, though.
That's good. All right, anyone else?
My name is Frank Tanner. I'm the President of the Board of Directors of the Local Senior Citizen Center. And I'd like to first of all, thank the city for clearing Lincoln in front of the building so we could get in and out, okay? We were here last month asking that the council consider supporting an application that we're going to be making to the county commissioners to create a senior service district. We were asked, okay, if, if we do that, how much money would two mills raise? I think you all got that information. I believe it was $379,340, if the total two mills was generated. Okay? And what, tonight, I'd like to talk to you about why it's important to us that you think about supporting that application. If you go down to the local nursing home, it costs about $8,000 a month, okay? If you go to the REACH Assisted Living and live there, they can be paying up the $70 a day in Medicaid for the services that REACH provides, okay? Your senior center provides all kinds of services to seniors and some to the community at large. For example, we provide about 100 home-delivered meals every day. That's meals delivered to people who, for some reason or other, cannot come to the center. Okay? We also provide public transportation. We provide all kinds of recreational activities, fun things to do. There's supposed to be a square dance class going on right now. I don't know if it is or not. The thing simply is, we are not allowed to charge for the services we provide, okay? All we can do is say, this is our recommended donation. If, like, right now, our recommended donation for a meal is $6. If you don't have the $6, and there are people who don't, believe me, you can get that meal. You can get any service we provide and not actually contribute a penny, okay? For seniors, okay? If they're non-seniors, like the public transportation part, it's $5 a ride, okay? Now, if you have any questions, we'll try to answer them. We, we can tell you that our budget right now is somewhere around $1 million, okay? There are lots of things we would like to be able to do better if we could generate more money. And out of that budget, we have to provide at least 25%, okay? So it's not all federal or state money, but we would greatly appreciate it if you'd consider supporting the creation of that senior district. You have any questions? Anybody?
Go ahead.
Your Honor, Frank, do you know if, if that mill levy did pass, could you use those funds to use as, you know, down payment on grants or offsetting grants?
Matching, matching money, yes. We certainly could.
Okay.
That's what we do with the money that we generate. We use it as match. Doesn't matter where it comes from. As long as it's local or private money, we can use it as match.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
If I may, just to help add to the conversation, Wyoming Statute 1815-111 talks about the use of funds that are generated. And just to briefly cover that, it says that it shall be solely used for programs and for the payment of bond premiums as authorized by statute, but shall not be used for the purchase of real property or for capital construction expenditures. And then the statute goes through a few of the examples of what the programs may include, which is the establishment or maintenance of programs or services for senior citizen centers, the expansion of existing senior citizen centers to provide programs of nutrition, health, or transportation, if other sources of grant funds are not available. And then it says the district may provide directly or contract for the provision of senior citizen programs, et cetera, et cetera.
It, it sounds like, doesn't say it can't be used for salaries, but doesn't say it can, though. That's interesting.
Your Honor, with my law degree that I do not have, my, my quick review of the statute, it is silent on that, but it does say programs and not for capital.
Interesting. Anybody else?
So anyway, if you think about it, we plan to go to the commissioners at their meeting later this month.
And if you think of any questions a little later, call me at the senior center. My name's Lori Weber. I'm the director, and I will look up any information you want. Thank you.
You all know that you own that building, right? You, you gave us the one down on Adams where the bus barn is. Both of those facilities.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilwoman Lindsay Cox.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Dean Pronto.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Kristy Salisbury.
Here.
Mayor Tim Hancock.
I am here. I declare we have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Wants it. Arm wrestle for it. Councilmember Pronto has the second, or has the motion. Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. I vote aye. Motion passes. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience, if you're wanting to talk to the council about an item that's scheduled for a public hearing, you have an opportunity to speak during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on another item may speak now. If you would like to do so, I'd ask you to come up to the microphone here. This meeting is being broadcast on the Internet and on the television, so please tell us your name and any organization you're affiliated with it. We'd like to hear from you.
I'm Randy Carlholm. I'm the new CEO of Big Horn Cooperative. I'm making a tour around of all of our communities that we have locations in. I wanted to introduce myself, possibly hand out some business cards, so if there's ever any issues, you would have a direct way of contacting me. Wanted to tell everyone that we want to be good neighbors, good corporate citizens, and we want to support our local communities. So if there's any way that we can help, support, or do something, we would certainly ask that someone reach out to us to do so. And we're here to be a part and hopefully help and contribute. So if that's possible, I'd like to give you folks some business cards.
Sure, you can come on up. That sounds great. Thank you for coming and introducing yourself.
This has my direct contact information on it.
Thank you.
Anything comes up at all, please reach out to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So I wasn't quite expecting down to one left. You guys get a flip.
I'm gonna give it to him.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Randy. I took a guess at your last name and I was, I was close.
Okay.
So.
It's Swedish, though.
That's good. All right, anyone else?
My name is Frank Tanner. I'm the President of the Board of Directors of the Local Senior Citizen Center. And I'd like to first of all thank the city for clearing Lincoln in front of the building so we could get in and out, okay? We were here last month asking that the council consider supporting an application that we're going to be making to the county commissioners to create a senior service district. We were asked, okay, if, if we do that, how much money would two meals raise? I think you all got that information. I believe it was $379,340 if the total two meals was generated. Okay, and tonight I'd like to talk to you about why it's important to us that you think about supporting that application. If you go down to the local nursing home, it costs about $8,000 a month, okay? If you go to the REACH Assisted Living and live there, they can be paying up the $70 a day in Medicaid for the services that REACH provides, okay? Your senior center provides all kinds of services to seniors and some to the community at large. For example, we provide about 100 home-delivered meals every day. That's meals delivered to people who for some reason or other cannot come to the center, okay? We also provide public transportation. We provide all kinds of recreational activities, fun things to do. There's supposed to be a square dance class going on right now. I don't know if it is or not. The thing simply is, we are not allowed to charge for the services we provide, okay? All we can do is say this is our recommended donation. Like, right now, our recommended donation for a meal is $6. If you don't have the $6, and there are people who don't, believe me, you can get that meal. You can get any service we provide and not actually contribute a penny, okay? For seniors, okay? If they're non-seniors, like the public transportation part, it's $5 a ride, okay? Now, if you have any questions, we'll try to answer them. We, we can tell you that our budget right now is somewhere around $1 million, okay? There are lots of things we would like to be able to do better if we could generate more money. And out of that budget, we have to provide at least 25%, okay? So it's not all federal or state money, but we would greatly appreciate it if you'd consider supporting the creation of that senior district. You have any questions? Anybody?
Go ahead.
Your Honor, Frank, do you know if, if that Mill Libby did pass, could you use those funds to use as, you know, down payment on grants or offsetting grants?
Matching, matching money, yes. We certainly could.
Okay.
That's what we do with the money that we generate. We use it as match. Doesn't matter where it comes from. As long as it's local or private money, we can use it as match.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir. If I may, just to help add to the conversation, Wyoming Statute 1815-111 talks about the use of funds that are generated. And just to briefly cover that, it says that it shall be solely used for programs and for the payment of bond premiums as authorized by statute, but shall not be used for the purchase of real property or for capital construction expenditures. And then the statute goes through a few of the examples of what the programs may include, which is the establishment or maintenance of programs or services for senior citizen centers, the expansion of existing senior center, senior citizen centers to provide programs of nutrition, health, or transportation if other sources of grant funds are not available. And then it says the district may provide directly or contract for the provision of senior citizen programs, et cetera, et cetera.
It, it sounds like, doesn't say it can't be used for salaries, but doesn't say it can, though. That's interesting.
Your Honor, with my law degree that I do not have, my quick review of the statute, it is silent on that, but it does say programs and not for capital.
Interesting. Anybody else?
So anyway, if you think about it, we plan to go to the commissioners at their meeting later this month.
And if you think of any questions a little later, call me at the senior center. My name's Lori Weber. I'm the director. And I will look up any information you want. Thank you.
You all know that you own that building, right? You, you gave us the one down on Adams where the bus barn is. Both of those facilities, all the equipment that's in the senior center itself has been there since Jerry Vincent Hawes opened the door the first time. I believe that was in 1997. And a lot of it needs to be replaced. And the bus barn is in the process of getting or we're hoping to get a new roof on it, so. But like, we have, we have three vans or buses. One of the lifts works on three buses that have lifts for handicapped people. Only one works and we can't find anybody in Riverton to fix them. So we'd probably have to go to Casper. But we need your help, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Frank and Lori. Appreciate you coming in. Anyone else that wanted to speak to the council?
My name is Brittany Martin, and I am the new shelter manager at Paws for Life Animal League. And with me I have...
My name is Shaylan Hines. I am office help as well as kennel staff.
And just behind us in the back, we have some more kennel staff employees and then some of our board members with us as well. If I may, I do have a paper that I could pass out to everyone, just kind of discussing exactly what we're wanting to propose for you guys tonight.
Sounds great. Come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So first off, we would like to thank Mayor Hancock and all of the council members for allowing us to speak in front of everyone today. We just wanted to start off, there's been some miscommunication about what we would like to do with the shelter and helping the shelter run. And we would just like to start off by saying that we are not changing the hours of business, but we will be open from the public from 12 to 5 Tuesday through Friday and open 10 to 1 on Saturdays. We are proposing a trial period for the month of March to be open for appointment for potential adopters. We are wanting potential adopters to fill out applications, and when the application is being approved, we will schedule an appointment to meet the animal that you are interested in in more depth. This allows that the animals that are coming from inadequate situations, that they have time to meet with potential adopters, with everybody that is in the home, and all of the animals that are in the home as well, to ensure that they are going into the proper household and that they can care for them properly.
By having everybody, well, sorry, not everybody, potential adopters go by appointment, it allows us to thoroughly check every, all the information we need to vet checks. We call landlords if they rent, you know, situations like that. The process will take no more than two to three business days. In most cases, when we are accepting applications, we feel rushed. A lot of people come in trying to quickly adopt animals, and sometimes it doesn't work out, you know, the best. And it gives us a longer period of time to make sure that this potential adopter or this home is right for our animals. We get a lot of animals who have come from bad situations, and we, we, we need to make sure that they are put in the proper homes.
Oftentimes, we put our trust into what they were calling foster to adopts and allowing animals to go home into homes that when they were not fixed. We've decided to go away with the foster to adopt because we were not getting people to bring the animals back to us. They were failing to take them to appointments, to get them fixed, to get care done. And this will just kind of stop that to make sure that, you know, if they're wanting to adopt, they don't have to go through all of that communication with us and the, they can just straight out foster for, you know, a month or so and see exactly, you know, if they fit in their home. It takes an animal up to three to six months to be in the current home that they are in to show their true self and to ensure that it, they will work in your home. We understand that the shelter has been ran this way, being open to the public 24/7 during our working hours without appointment, but it is just not currently working for the limited staff that we have and just people coming in and just expecting to take that animal home that day. So if we just ask that if you guys have any questions about how anything is going to be ran, to either message us through Facebook, or you guys can email us or call, and we'll answer all of the questions to our best of our ability. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions at the current moment, we can answer them.
Sounds good. I have one, but maybe it'd be better explained by City Administrator Butterfield. Could you tell us why the city has any say in, I guess, how Paws does their operations?
Yes, Your Honor, I'm happy to do that. I do want to thank members of Paws for meeting with myself and Chief Ramero. We had a good visit last week. Also want to thank our Animal Control Officer, Hannah Sanderson, for her work. In brief, we do have an agreement with Paws that outlines that the city does have the ability to approve the hours of operation and the fees charged by the animal facility. That has to do with the monies that are provided by the city council each fiscal year, and then also with the agreement that we have with them to operate on city land and in the facility, excuse me, city facility. So we appreciate them coming tonight to talk to you about their intention. Again, I appreciated the opportunity to meet with them. But really, as a, as a city council, you have the authority to adopt by resolution the hours of operation for the animal shelter and adopt by resolution the fees that are charged by the animal shelter. Prior to going through a formal resolution process, the, the Paws board and the Paws staff felt that it was appropriate to do a trial period. And I recommended they come and speak to you tonight, just during public comment, so that you could get a sense for that idea. And they could get a sense from you if, if you wanted to engage in that trial period or not before a formal resolution is considered.
Thank you. And this is a little bit interesting because we're not talking necessarily about the... I mean, this is a change of hours, I'm sure. I don't know that we've had any quite discussions or anything when hours have changed in the past. But really, this is more of a change of the way you're doing business. You're still going to be open for the same hours.
Correct.
You're just wanting to change your process for adoption. Are you finding that you have a lot of people that are adopting animals and then surrendering them within a pretty short amount of time?
Yes. Most animals, well, not most animals, but we have a good majority of animals that go home for maybe about a week, maybe a month at tops, and then they bring them back saying that they're not working in their home and that they need to surrender them.
And this is despite the fact that you're charging an adoption fee and a surrender fee?
Yes.
That was my question, sorry. Any other questions or commentary?
So would the public be able to come in during your office hours and look at the animals and then set up the appointment?
Yes.
So they'd still be free to come in and just see what was available and then?
Yeah.
And you'd explain that process to them then?
Yes, that they would be willing to come in between the 12 and 5 and the 10 to 1 on Saturdays. They can come in and look at animals. If they're interested, then they can put in the application, and we will call them once approved to schedule the appointment.
How does the process work now?
Right now, it's very similar to what we are trying to do. But it is, the way we are doing it now does not give us enough time, or the animals, or the potential adopters enough time to actually meet the animal. They come in, they say, oh, that's a cute dog. I want to take that one home. But they don't consider that this dog has a past. A lot of our dogs have a past. And so they have behavioral issues, you know, they're terrified of people. And so this gives them more time to get to know the animal before they actually take it home.
That makes sense, but is, in terms of the adoption process, now they come in, they say, I'd like this one, they fill in the paperwork and take the dog home? Or is there still a waiting period while you go through their application or whatever?
There is still a waiting process. It's not like they come in and take the dog right that minute. If they're renting, then, then we still call the landlord, still make sure that we have permission from the landlord to release that dog into that home. We are wanting to try to do it this way so that we can actually call vet references and we can actually call, I'm sorry, references and then their vet that they are currently using, just to make sure that all of their other pets in the household are up to date on vaccinations and that they're, they are well taken care of. Right now, we, because we are so full, we are trying to... They're more filling out the application and then they call like the next day, wanting to know if they've been accepted so they can take the dog home. And, and they don't really think about spending time with that dog before it leaves the shelter. And, you know, them leaving the shelter will, will help with that process, just because they're not in that stressful environment at the shelter. But we have to work up to taking them out of the shelter with somebody new.
So how would the adoption process work now? They'll schedule a time they come in, spend an hour or something, or?
That's, that's, yeah. What we would like to do is that they can, they can schedule an appointment. If it's an appointment that starts at noon, then they can spend an hour with the dog and, and see how that first hour goes. And then they can continue coming back if, if they, you know, liked the process of, you know, what they have seen, the result of what they have seen. And then we can continue from there.
Your Honor?
Yes.
You're saying that the turnaround time you expect to be two to three days?
For applications to be processed, yes.
Okay, so you have two to three days to process the application, and then what happens?
And then if the application is approved, then we will call the adopter and let them know that their application has been approved and then ask them if they would like to schedule an appointment, whatever time works best for them. And then they can come in and, and spend time with that animal.
Okay, so you're doing the background process before they interact with the animal?
Correct.
Okay, and then during regular business hours, they are allowed to come in and kind of look and see, but not really interact with the dog?
We're still allowing them to come in. They can, you know, take the kennel out, the cat out of the kennel, or they can take dogs on walks. But if they're interested in adopting, then we would like to, to do it by appointment.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
In other words, if somebody wanted to come and walk a dog that they're interested in adopting and come do it Monday through Friday at noon, Tuesday through Friday, sorry.
That's all right.
They'd be able to do that?
Yes.
While they're waiting for the adoption process to go through?
So it takes two to three days for the application, and then how much longer for the appointment?
The appointment could be scheduled that...
That same day?
That same day. So, and, and two to three is just like our, you know, two to three, it doesn't necessarily have to take that long for the process. It's just depending on how many people are interested in, you know, animals, then it will take us longer to go through those applications.
And do you have problems now having enough people to adopt them in the first place?
As in enough people that come in and want to adopt? Some months are better than others. Some months, we have several people that come in and want to adopt, and some we have very little people coming in looking for...
And do you think that will deter people from adopting them at all? If they have to come back and wait and do that, or?
I don't think so, because most of them that come in, they either take the application home with them, fill out the application and bring it back within an hour, or even the next day, you know, if they have to go to work or something. They still bring the application back. So I think with us even, you know, processing the application and it taking one more day, I don't think they're going to turn away from that.
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
So it doesn't really seem like a scheduling issue. It just seems like you need to define your adoption process so that people don't come in and expect an immediate result. So you just need us to help you say, this is how it's going to be from here on out?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and I think probably since the last time we had adopted any resolution in regards to, this is probably a change in hours than we've had before. I think we were talking about fees, the last time those had been approved by the council, which according to the MOU need to be done, was 2000s?
Yeah, Your Honor, it was a number of years ago, so regardless of your decision or how this trial period goes, there will be a resolution that comes before you to adopt the fees, because we need to make that current.
I guess I'm just, I, I kind of see what Councilwoman Cox is saying. This is, I mean, if this is, this is your procedure that we're talking about, I don't know that we necessarily have as much a say in procedure as much as in the hours. The hours of operation, if they're going to remain the same, I don't think that the council needs to sit there, approve or disapprove when it comes to your procedure for adopting. You're still going to be open. You're still going to have people there. I'm not trying to hang my hat on a technicality, but I, I don't know that there needs to be any action from the council unless City Administrator Butterfield tells me I'm completely off base.
Your Honor, no, you are not off base. And just, if I may, can I ask a clarifying question as well?
Sure.
As far as people that need to come and reclaim their animal or pick up their animal that was impounded, they're able to come without setting an appointment. Am I understanding that correct?
That is correct. Any reclaimed animals, city licenses, donations, anything outside of adoptions is welcome in between the hours that we are open.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Brittany. No, I don't believe that you need to take any action at this time. Maybe a consensus that you're okay with the idea of them doing this trial period for the, the month of March, and then we can reexamine it and go from there.
I, I don't even know if we necessarily need a consensus on that. I think if it's something that they want to do in part of their order of business, does anybody disagree with me on that?
No. No, sure.
So I think, we do, I think, need a resolution down the road, and I think Mr. Butterfield's on that already, making sure that we have all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted in terms of fees, hours of operation, that I'm sure have changed over the years. But I think other than that, i- if you're wanting to change the way you're doing things, we'll see how it goes. I wish you luck. I hope it goes well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So.
Excuse me, Your Honor, I'm just wondering, can you just say the email address so the people watching can hear it?
Sure. It's pawsofriverton@gmail.com.
And the phone number?
Our phone number is 307-857-6002.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Can we hear from our animal control officer of this issue or not?
If you'd like. Did you want to speak to this at all? I guess just for the television public. Tell us your name and...
Shannon Sanderson. I'm the Animal Control Officer for the City of Riverton. So with this, I, I, there was kind of a miscommunication. When the initial process was put forward in the procedure, I, I was told that there, the public wasn't going to be able to come in on hours anymore, just on a whim. That was what I was told by Paws, that that was, you had to call and make an appointment. That was my biggest concern of not supporting this change in procedure. So with them clarifying that the public is still able to come in, get your city licenses, because this is the only place for the public to get city licenses, is Paws. So as providing the public is still able to do that, drop off a donation, get, drop off supplies, make contact with, and get a good established relationship going as long as... make contact with, get a good established relationship going, as long as that is still okay to do, I'm in support of that. I'm totally fine with that. It was a miscommunication that I was told that they would have to call and make an appointment to do any of this stuff, not just be able to have an open door policy to walk in and do any of this stuff. So that whole convenience to the public was totally blown out of, it totally wouldn't be convenient for the public. So in the sense, you know, longer process for the dogs to get adopted out and find homes. So with the clarifying, with them clarifying and being transparent to everybody that this is still allowable for people to go in and do these things, and walk in the door without an appointment, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, as long as that's the case. And I think it has to be transparent across the board on how this procedure's being implemented or wanted to put forth, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so clarity is very important, and I want it to be clear with everybody and with the public that they are still able to do this. I don't, I do not support having to call and make an appointment to do these things, and that's what I was told previously is how it was going to go about. So, being clarified on being able to still open, walk in the door, walk a dog, make a donation, get to see the animals, I'm fine with that. It's when you have to call and make an appointment to do any of this stuff is what I do not support.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you coming in and chiming in on that, and makes sense.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Questions for me?
Thank you. Appreciate it. We are. If you'd like to come up to the mic, tell us your name. I guess before we do that, thank you, was there anyone else from PAWS that wanted to speak, or you guys are satisfied with it? Thank you very much for all your hard work. I appreciate it, and, yes. Go ahead. If you could tell us your name, and if you have an organization you're with?
I'm Carl Falcon. I live in precinct 34. I'm speaking for myself tonight. Did you have a chance to read my email from the 28th of January?
Let me look.
On the snow removal. It was addressed to Mike Mills, and you were copied on it.
I did receive it. I don't know if I had a chance to read it very closely. I apologize. You could just tell me, I guess, what you were...
Oh, there were just three points in here I wanted to address in the meeting tonight.
Sure.
Well, the first one was I wanted to thank Kyle Butterfield. When we had our second heavy snow, I got stuck on Fifth Street, and he happened to pull along in his pickup truck, and he helped me get out of the snow. So, thank you, Kyle. It was awesome, perfect timing. The second thing I wanted to bring up is, in the email, there's a question there. I noticed the pastor of the United Pentecostal Church, when he was clearing the snow out of his parking lot, stopped at the curb, and instead of clearing the snow out, he was taking a pickup truck and running it back and forth over the snow to pack it down. And I asked him, "Why is he doing that?" And he said, "Well, I understood there's an ordinance for the city that you, citizens can't clear snow from city streets." And I did a little research on that, and as I understand, there's an ordinance against putting snow in the gutters, but there's no ordinance against clearing the streets in front of a residence or business or church. Is that correct?
Well, Mr. Butterfield?
Your Honor, I am not aware of an ordinance that prohibits that.
Okay, so that was the clarification I wanted to get to him, and I was going to suggest that the city might want to put some kind of a notice in the paper or other public forum, so that the citizens are not confused or informed about the actual city plan for snow removal. And the second comment I had was on the city plan itself. I noticed it hasn't been updated since 2017. In comparison, the city snow removal plan for Lander was updated this year, and what's really nice about their plan is that they've made it interactive. I think that would be a really good idea to consider for the snow removal plan for Riverton. And I was doing a little research, and I noticed there's an article in the Riverton Ranger from 2020, 2003, which describes almost identical problems to the ones that are being discussed this year. And I was surprised that in 20 years, there's been very little change in that. And it all boils down seemingly to a matter of communication. So I just, I can send you a copy of that article, and we can go into the details later. But my, my point is here, I think it's probably time to update the city's snow removal plan, and there's a lot of good opportunities there. And the last thing I wanted to mention on that was, the City of Cody has an interesting item in their plan, and where they have a webpage where citizens who want to volunteer to remove snow from, say, senior citizens or people who have disabilities, they can court, they coordinate that volunteer work, and I think that would be a really nice addition to the snow removal plan here.
I appreciate that. I guess the best thing that I can tell you is, we've had years where we talk a lot about snow, and about nothing but snow, it seems. And then we have years where we don't have very much snow at all. And so, you know, a year like last year probably isn't one where we would have seen the need to update the plan, but when you have a year like this year, it's a good time to start looking at it and saying, "Hey, what can we learn? What can we do differently?" So, any feedback, I would definitely say, is appreciated. I did receive your email. After I received your email, I spoke with City Administrator Butterfield, and talked a little bit about it, and so I already knew what the answer was when I asked him about the city ordinance, because we had discussed that. Of course, there's, there's issues that can be created, and I think that's why there's this perception that people can't clear the snow on public streets. We have, I frequently have fielded concerns about people having snow being placed in front of their home, taken away from somebody else's house, put in front of their house where they've been parking. They get frustrated with that, have, of course, concerns about damage to the streets. So I understand people not wanting to be plowing the streets, and I guess we wouldn't want to sit there and say, "Hey, everybody, just go out and start plowing on your own." I mean, that's the reason we have a snow removal plan. But it's definitely something that I could tell you is not an ordinance against it, so...
Well, there were a couple other points in the email that I think would probably be better addressed directly. If you'd have a look at that and get back to me later, I'd appreciate it.
I can do that, Mr. Falcon. And just so you know, why I hadn't gotten back ahold of you was, I hadn't had a conversation with Mr. Butterfield, so that's...
Sure.
We've had it, and I apologize for not replying to you sooner, but I appreciate the feedback. I appreciate the email.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
I really like your idea about the volunteer people that might be available to help, because I was lucky enough that someone was helping his aunt and uncle get out of their driveway that apply on the front of his truck, and I was like, "Can you just go and lightly level the road for the rest of the people?" And I think maybe another idea would be, just maybe have a fund to, when it's winter like this. People that have it, maybe we have a fund in the city that we could hire some private people to help clear some of these streets, or do something. I think that's a great idea to update it and get...
I've actually seen it happening. It's just not being coordinated.
I know. That's why I said, I think that's great to have an interactive kind of plan and stuff. I appreciate you coming, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Larson, just hang out a minute, Mr. Falcon?
No matter where you live in a residential area, no matter where you put the snow, it's the wrong place. I have a tractor with an ice blade, and I'm able to do just exactly what you're saying. And I live next to a school with a one-way street, so the wrong way, I fill that with snow. And the city picks it up for me, thank you, city, and the school district also piles it on there. But there's not enough space for that area of snow, so we put it on opposite sides of the street. We try everything we can do. In fact, the drainage pond that takes all of Woodridge subdivision and coats it, is full of snow right now. So if we had a 90-degree temperature, which we won't, but, you know, global warming what it is, we would have a tremendous flood in that area. So, last time in 2017, we had 75 people in this room that told us that they did not want the snow piled in front of their sidewalks. And that, there's no 75 here. And so, Mr. Butterfield, at that time, was in a different position and chair, and he suggested that we have a study. And I said, "There's no reason to have a study. They've already spoken about it. That's what they want, is put it to the center." That's why it's in the center all over town, because 75 people from the elk reserve, moose, hunter, deer, all of those people requested that, because their driveways were being covered by side clearing of the snow. And most of them are older than I am, and so they were unable to clear it off. So, you know, I, I have property on Main Street, and I also have a snow blower that will put it right in the middle of Main Street. And the police just give me dickens when I do that, but there's no ordinance against it. So, we will take that under consideration, and, I mean, when you got too much snow, there's just not a lot of space to put it.
I understand that. I do understand why they have the center collection of the snow. I've seen the equipment out there gathering it up. The only issue I've seen with that is that when you do that in an intersection, a lot of cars can get stuck on that pile of snow right in the intersection.
Oh, boy. Yeah.
And they usually do have, when, whenever that happens, they're trying to cut out those intersections, especially where you've got entries in the business or an intersection with another road. But, snow being what it is, it gets where it wants to, and comes down where it wants to. But I appreciate your feedback. I'll tell you right now, it's, any feedback is appreciated on it. I am by no means trying to discourage people from talking about snow. It is a perennial topic, annual topic, actually, to be honest. But I, the best thing that I can say for why it hasn't been updated until now is, we haven't had snow this bad. So, it is a good time to be talking about it. It's a good time to be trying to come up with different ideas. I agree regarding the idea of helping each other out with it. There's a lot of different things that people do online, connect with each other and with communities, and try to encourage service, and I, I think that's an excellent idea. And I would encourage people, if they need to have some help removing snow, reach out to me. I'll try to find somebody that can do it. I've got five kids. I'll go put them to work. I don't mind, so I'm, I'm not going to pay them. Anyway, in all reality, I think we, one of the things I've enjoyed about the snow and the removal of snow is that it has led to, I think, some more community-mindedness, and I've seen a lot of people being willing to help out people when they're stuck, whenever anything has happened, and I think that's, that's important. That's what we need to do as a community, so I think we need to encourage and keep that going, so. Anyway. All right, well, we've gotten to item seven of the agenda. We're just going along like gangbusters tonight. The city clerk, please read the consent agenda items by title only.
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, January 17, 2023, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, January 17, 2023, executive session. Approval of the minutes, January 31, 2023, special council meeting. Approval of the minutes, January 31, 2023, executive session. Approval of the minutes, February 7, 2023, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for February 7, 2023. An approval of the municipal court report for the month of January 2023.
Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor, this evening, the finance committee met, and the consideration of claims to be paid was in the amount of $268,252.08. Payroll and liabilities for $127.23 and $113.23 in the amount of $687,422.77, for a total of $955,674.85.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Bailey with the motion. Councilwoman Cox with the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Wyoming Professional Water and Wastewater Operators Week proclamation. If you give me a minute, I will get this up here. Is it in? No, it's not in here. Let me pull it up. Standby. All right. Well, not all right. I'm looking at last year's agendas. Give me another minute. I have so many screens that I have to open just to be able to function, and this is no exception to that. Okay. All right, this is a proclamation regarding Wyoming Professional Water and Wastewater Operator Week proclamation. I'll just read it. Whereas Wyoming Certified Drinking Water Treatment, Drink and Water Distribution and Wastewater Collection and Wastewater Treatment Operators are professionals that perform a vital service for our state. And whereas Wyoming's professional operators protect public health by removing contaminants from our drinking water, delivering safe drinking water to our taps, efficiently delivering wastewater to treatment facilities, and correctly treating wastewater. And whereas Wyoming's professional operators preserve high quality of Wyoming's lakes, rivers, and streams by ensuring the proper treatment of wastewater. And whereas Wyoming's professional operators properly operate and maintain water and wastewater equipment and facilities, ensuring the longevity of one of our state's largest infrastructure investments. And whereas clean, safe drinking water in our pristine natural environment is central to our quality of life in Wyoming's future. And whereas it is fitting to recognize and honor the work of professional operators in protecting the public's health, our environment, and water resources, and the water and wastewater infrastructure of Wyoming. Now therefore, I, Tim Hancock, Mayor of the City of Riverton, do proclaim the week of February 6 through 12, 2023, as Wyoming Professional Water and Wastewater Operator Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional water and wastewater operators employed by the City of Riverton for our vital services they perform, and their exemplary dedication to the City of Riverton. So, do I have the actual proclamation here? Do you have it? All right, well, I can sign that later. That's fine. I was able to talk a little bit about this proclamation yesterday morning, and I can say, one of the biggest differences, I think, between what we have to offer here in our country, in our state, the opportunities that we have, just everything that we have as a part of our quality of, quality of life is due to the hard work of people to ensure that we have water. We kind of take it for granted. People just sit there and assume it's always going to be there. When it's not there, we really miss it. I mean, certainly in Riverton. But I really appreciate the hard work of our city staff, and I think they do an excellent job, and I'm always impressed with how well they do. So, I appreciate the opportunity to sign that proclamation. Next up, consideration of ordinance number 2023-001, second reading, Rezone Woodridge Estates. I think we're needing somebody on the phone. Can we start with the reading the ordinance by title only?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, so would the city clerk please read ordinance number 23-001 by title only?
Proposed ordinance number 23-001 on second reading. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the City of Riverton, Wyoming, designating the rezone of Woodridge Estates, Block 1, Track 1, final plat replat of lots 3 and 4, and the vacation of platted easements with lots 10 through 15, and all of Block 17, City of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, from planned neighborhood shopping district CP to commercial district C1.
Thank you. And do we want to have our... And do we want to have our phone conversation after we have a motion? It's okay. We can wait.
Mr. Senator.
Hello, this is Tim Hancock. Uh, we're here in our meeting regarding ordinance number twenty-three zero zero one on second reading.
Great. Hi, Tim.
How are you?
I'm doing well. Yeah.
Okay. Um, I think we'll probably need a motion, and then we'll, uh, we'll go to you. So the chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three zero zero one on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Bailey, second by Councilwoman Cox. Discussion. All right. Now's your time to shine. Why don't you go ahead and tell us who you are and?
Yes. Hi, everybody. Uh, this is Andrew Scorefar, uh, Vice President, Lecon Development. I don't have anything too specific to add this evening. Um, just want to apologize. I wasn't, uh, present at the last meeting. Um, but, uh, I am here for any questions, um, that, uh, that any may have. Um, and we also do have, um, Dawn Wilhelm with Inbert Miller, uh, there in person as well, who will, um, uh, be our civil engineer, uh, on the, on the projects when we move forward. So, uh, willing to take any questions, uh, and please let me know.
Thank you, Andrew. Do we have any questions or other discussions? Mr. Councilman Larson.
Uh, I noticed that it says, as noted above, the property is located along Wedwood Road. An access property will be continued from East Woodbridge and Pure Gas Road. Both roads are sufficient to serve the proposed usage. I don't agree with that. Uh, neither roads are commercial, nor do they have the capability to handle additional traffic. Secondly, when you say that the Sixteenth East, which now is a through street all the way from East Park, that, that just tells you that the traffic is, right now, more than has been planned. So, I don't think your park, your traffic statement is correct. Thirdly, the property is surrounding it, is totally residential. The sites that you cite as the propane distribution is rarely used and is off-street by fifty feet. So, it's a residential area where I think you're trying to capitalize on rezoning to make more money on it.
You, you can go ahead and respond to that if you'd like.
Yeah, um, sure. Uh, I guess I'll just start on access. Um, you know, we don't have a specific site plan at this point, but, um, we do, uh, obviously, the site more faces Webwood, and there, I think it would be ease of access to the site off of Webwood. Um, as far as residential use versus commercial use, the site is zoned commercial currently. Um, we would just be changing slightly the designation, um, uh, from CP, which is Commercial Shopping District, to Commercial General. Um, there's actually overlapping uses in those two, um, but, uh, what we envisioned for the site, uh, further talking to the Community Development Department, uh, you know, general commercial fits more accurately. And, you know, as our letter indicated, and, um, I'm sure it was articulated as well, um, verbally, the, uh, our plan for the site, our kind of vision for the site, is a commercial use that would be, you know, anywhere between three to five units of office space with a complimentary kind of garage space. Um, this is something that actually our office is in. Uh, uh, I'm in Michigan. Um, we've done in other places that, uh, can be, you know, it's, it's actually a pretty minimal impact use, uh, I'd say, that is allowed in the current zoning. And usually can be used from maybe a, a small subcontractor, like an HVAC, um, uh, subcontractor that may need a small office, but also some storage space. We've rented these space, these types of spaces, even individuals that may want to, you know, more and more folks are working from home, but still, still do want, uh, a space to work from, that they utilize that small of a space for that. And then just a garage space for maybe extra storage or, um, you know, uh, woodworking or something. So, uh, just on traffic, I really, you know, I, I don't see a, a heavy traffic use, um, being planned, at least for, for what we envisioned for the site. And again, you know, this is a rezone from what currently is Commercial Shopping District to General Commercial.
Go ahead, Council-
Originally, the property, Woodbridge, that area was all townhouse. If you look at the plot plan of nineteen eighty. And, uh, you talk about that redwood or webwood handling that much traffic. It is solely a residential area. And because of the Woodbridge Apartments, there is parking on both sides of the street there. And I doubt you could put a lot of tra- more traffic than exists currently.
If, would you like to respond to that?
Uh, uh, again, I, I would say that, you know, this area is zoned commercial currently. Um, and, uh, you know, the, the designation changes from, uh, neighborhood serving commer- or, excuse me, uh, from Commercial Shopping District to General Commercial. And, um, you know, the use that is planned or the, is, I think, uh, again, a less traffic use than what currently would, would be allowed, uh, under the, the current zoning.
Uh, I, if I'm understanding correctly, if you're wanting to have this be office space, how much, I guess, public access are you thinking you'd need for it?
Uh, I, they're really kind of, yeah. Um, it, it would depend on, obviously, the end user in the, in the space. But, um, you know, the, the, most of the types of tenants that we've had in spaces like this, it is not a, you know, um, a high traffic, uh, from, from outside of that, that user themselves.
Any other discussion or questions? Could you tell me how to pronounce your last name again?
Yes. It is Scorefar.
Surefar. Did I butcher it?
Scorefar.
Scorefar.
Uh, not too bad.
That's good. I just, I, I had read it, and I was wondering how to pronounce it, and you said it so quickly, I didn't get a chance to give it a shot, so.
No, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other discussion? Questions? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay?
Nay.
Two nays?
No, I'm a nay.
Aye? Nay?
Yeah.
Okay. Two nays. I, I vote aye. Motion passes. Okay. Uh, consideration of twenty-twenty-three Airport Crack Seal Project Contract, City Administrators' Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be brief. In your packet is a map showing the limits of the project and the budget for the project. Um, essentially, it's important to maintain the pavement investments that we do have. Unfortunately, the state of Wyoming has the same feeling, and they're willing to participate at an eighty-twenty ratio to maintain pavements at Central Wyoming Regional Airport, specifically through a crack sealing program. This crack sealing program works through different regions of the state, and in twenty-twenty-three, it's, uh, our turn to participate in this program, should you so choose to execute this contract. Essentially, you are committing yourself to a project total estimate that is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fi- two hundred and thirty-five dollars. The state would fund a hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight of that total, and the city would be required to match twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars. And this would be out of next year's budget. This current fiscal year budget does not reflect this total, but the work will not, uh, happen until next fiscal year. So you will be obligating funds next fiscal year by entering this contract. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please read Resolution number fourteen sixty-six by title only? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong one. I skipped down. We're, uh, gonna skip number eleven and go straight to twelve. No. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the contract between the Wyoming Department of Transportation, Central Wyoming Regional Airport for the twenty-twenty-three Airport Crack Seal Project, and provide signatory authority to the city administrator.
So moved.
Councilman Larson with the motion. Councilmember Pronto with the second. Any discussion? Sorry, I confused these two. It's just, it was two airport things, and my eyes went to the middle of the page. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Any opposed say nay? Motion passes. All right. Now we can get to Resolutions Number fourteen sixty-six and fourteen sixty-seven, City Administrators' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. These resolutions that you'll act upon separately pertain to, uh, grants that we hope to secure through the FAA, and more specifically through the Airport Improvement Program. We've reported on this program in the past, but essentially, this is tied to our performance at the airport, specifically that ten thousand employment threshold. And when we achieve that threshold, we have the ability to receive a higher level of grant funds, specifically a million dollars each year. The first resolution pertains to our taxiway project. Uh, that project has already been awarded by you, and as you remember, the bids came in high, and we had a plan to, uh, seek additional funding to support, uh, the bids that were, excuse me, the bid that was awarded. These funds that we're applying for are administered through the AIP program, but are more specifically part of the bipartisan infrastructure law. And we do already have a, a right to the funds that we are applying for, if that makes sense. Um, specifically, we're requesting one million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. That would require, uh, a match from the City of Riverton in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. And then also, it will include a state match in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Specific to this project, we already have, uh, AIP grant in place in the amount of almost two million dollars. And then we also have a grant in place, um, through supplemental funding through AIP, AIP, in the amount of three point four million. So these funds will be in addition to the grants that we already have received. The second resolution that you'll be considering is for the procurement of equipment, um, specifically a loader and blower, um, for the airport. We currently have a cab-over-blade snow blower, so it's a single unit that has the blower attachment. It's aged. It's at its end of useful life, and is frequently down for repairs and hard to, uh, find parts to replace. Its replacement has been in our capital plan for a number of years. And because of the performance we've had at the airport, we do have the right to, to request these grant funds. Specifically, um, the application is for one million dollars of federal funds, a state match of forty thousand dollars, and then it would require a local match of twenty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Chair would entertain, oh, I'm sorry. Would the city clerk, you see, now, now I tried to skip again. City clerk, if you could please read a Resolution Number fourteen sixty-six by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Resolution Number fourteen sixty-six. A resolution of the governing body of the City of Riverton, supporting the application of Airport Improvement Program Grant Number Three dash fifty-six dash zero zero two four dash zero five four from the Federal Aviation Administration and its corresponding grant from the Aeronautics Division of the Wyoming Department of Transportation.
All right. Now the chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number fourteen sixty-six, supporting the application of Grant AIP Three dash five six six dash zero zero two four slash zero five four. Councilmember Pronto has the motion. Councilman Bailey has the second. Any discussion? So we can't just take this snow blower down Main Street?
It might be a little bit big, but we could try.
I, I just want to know the consequences if we started using it on our roads. Does the FAA take our birthday away, or?
They can. They just take money away.
Just money. We, we could say that we're driving it down Main to be repaired, maybe, and just, you know.
I think that's an appropriate answer, Councilman.
To note, Councilman Bailey is sometimes a little devious. Okay. Yes, Councilman Larson.
Um, you say that the, um, it's reached its, is it repairable still?
Your Honor, it, it really is not, Councilman.
So, so we're not going to get a re- a request next week or the year after next that we're going to give this away to Dubois or to Lander or somewhere else? You're going to scrap it, sell, uh, contents as scrap metal?
Your Honor, that, that really is where the value is. Um, if another airport wanted the item, we'd be happy to let that be a paperweight on their airport. But really, there's, there's no value left in the equipment at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
How, how old is that?
Your Honor, I don't have that off the top of my head. I'd have to respond back to you.
Just curious, because I don't recall it being that old. But I've been, I was on the airport board for a long time, and I kind of remember when we got it, but it's, or just working on it when it was still pretty new, but, yeah. It's hard to believe it's, it's worthless now.
Probably twenty years.
That could be an indicator more of your age than it's-
It could be, in my forgetfulness, apparently.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Any opposed say nay? Motion passes. Would the city clerk please read Resolution Number fourteen sixty-seven by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Resolution Number fourteen sixty-seven. A resolution of the governing body of the City of Riverton, supporting the application of Airport Improvement Program Grant Number Three dash five six dash zero zero two four dash zero five six from the Federal Aviation Administration and its corresponding grant from the Aeronautics Division of the Wyoming Department of Transportation.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number fourteen sixty-seven?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion. Councilman Larson has the second. Just jumping in there. Any discussion? I guess the discussion regarding the snow cab-over-blade snow blower was for this resolution, but.
Your Honor, if I may, we've got a pretty quick staff. Um, Mr. Agelston has access to our, our fleet records. Two thousand and three is the date. It's a Kodiak. Kodiak units are very hard to service, um, right now. And as mentioned in the staff report, it was involved in an accident a few years ago, and that has made it even all the more challenging to keep going and maintain.
Uh, that is true. I guess you might have equipment that might otherwise be serviceable, but if you don't have the parts, you don't have the ability to get the parts you need here when you need them, that makes it difficult. Different world than it used to be, man.
Very specialized equipment, too.
Yes. All right. Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Agelston, for that
Yes, sir.
report. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Any opposed say nay? Motion passes. Moving on, item thirteen, Raze Grant Application, Public Work Directors' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this staff report is seeking permission from the City Council for myself to apply for a Raze Grant. Part of the Bill Program, the bipartisan infrastructure, an infrastructure structure law, a rebuilding America Infrastructure and Sustainability and Excellence Grant. This project is for Airport Road, a complete rebuild of that road, taking it from a twenty-foot, twenty-two-foot wide road to thirty-eight foot. Would also allow for an eight-foot walking path alongside the roadway and lighting throughout the area. One point five billion dollars allocated this year, as it was last year when, uh, initially, we submitted an application at that point as well. The, uh, grant normally requires an eighty-twenty percent match. However, being in a rural area, the minimum matching component's not a requirement in this. So, uh, my application is not seeking a match. We're seeking the entire amount. other than some water infrastructure that wouldn't be eligible under this program anyway. So we will be seeking, if approved, $5,685,566 to rebuild that road.
All right, Chair would entertain a motion to authorize the Public Works Director to submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation's Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Program to improve airport road.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Cox has the motion, seconded by Councilwoman Borders. Discussion. Mr. Bailey.
Your Honor, Mr. Agelson, if we did come up with a match, does that increase our scoring or anything, or does that change anything in the decision of whether we get it or not?
In the notice of funding opportunity, I researched that. And the availability of matching funds is not a criteria that they measure at all.
Okay. It's good to hear.
Yeah.
You took my question. Glad you asked. Any other discussion?
Your Honor, I was going to say that, that would be a great project to have done. And that road is used extensively, especially with all the businesses up there now and the in the facilities that are there. It would be fantastic.
And if, just to follow up, if, if the grant was awarded, I would approach the Forest Committee. A part of this grant, they like to see that you have a program or a plan in place for any cost overruns on a project. Not that we'd anticipate any, but in this day and age, it's hard to say, but I don't want to approach the Forest Committee on a pipe dream right now. I'd rather have the grant in hand and then approach them for a contingency if that arose.
Any other discussion? I guess, tell me, just briefly, you were talking about a wider profile. Were you talking about the ability to walk as well? What was the plan there?
Yes, along the east side of the roadway, the plan includes an eight-foot walking path on the east side of the road. The walking path and the roadway itself will be lit all the way up. So it'll be a safe corridor for pedestrians, well, bikers, runners. It'll be an ADA compliant pathway.
Man, that could be nice. Well, make it happen, Mr. Agelson.
One other question.
Yes.
At one time, there was a discussion about that intersection of Cooper Road, Airport Road, the highway. Are they going to change anything to speak of there?
The geometry and the, at least the submission has us redesigning that intersection and bringing it in as 90 degrees to the highway directly across from Stagner. So you wouldn't have those two staggered intersections at the same location.
Okay. No roundabout, though?
No roundabout.
Okay.
Yay.
Bless you all.
No, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. I vote aye. Motion passes. Now I can say, make it happen, Mr. Agelson.
Do our best, sir.
All right, wastewater treatment plant centrifuge project. Public Works Directors Report. Public Works, works.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of weeks ago, the variable frequency drive on the centrifuge basically quit working, which prevented us from running the centrifuge to dry out the materials for storage for our biosolid program. This project is critical because we have, only have limited amount of storage for the liquefied materials up to, optimistically, 34 days. And then other processes would have to be implemented, which are a little difficult this time of year. Part of this project is to re, rebuild or replace the variable frequency drive to get the system back online right now. And then use the remainder of the money to basically go in there and rehab the entire system. The system's obsolete right now. You can't buy the VFD from the manufacturer anymore. It's obsolete. You have to shop around on eBay and other sources just to try to find the components, so. It's a little difficult. We were able to secure a VFD. The system will be up and running, but it's not a long-term solution. The money that we had budgeted for our fuel tank, it's an important project as well, but our ability actually to complete that project this budget year is not very practical at this point. We just haven't had a lot of interest, plus trying to abandon the fuel tank in place. There's some regulations that have to be met as well, so. We would like to prefer to shift that money over to the VFD, the centrifuge system and get that functioning, and then we'll deal with the fuel tank next budget.
Okay, Chair would entertain a motion to authorize the adjustment of the fiscal year '23 wastewater treatment plant capital budget, shifting the allocated monies from the fuel tank capital project to cover emergency repairs on the centrifuge system.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion. Councilwoman Cox has the second. Any other discussion?
This is Spartak Alec remark resolved that. When it comes to wastewater, we don't want to miss that.
Just one question.
Go ahead, Councilman.
On this underground facility, is this going to be a groundwater problem with a storage tank that is not double lined and, and containerized and so we've got a DEQ problem coming in at us?
Right now, there's no leaking hazard.
Do we have monitoring wells on that for sure?
No.
So, so we.
I've been told that the pickup tube in the tank itself has deteriorated to a point where you can only get about a quarter of the fuel out.
Thank you.
Is this, is there any chance that we would even be able to get this fuel tank done within the budget timeframe right now?
I doubt, very doubtful. I just don't see it happening.
But the plan right now is to make sure that we have that on the next year's budget? And get it.
You have to drain the tank, and then there's some discussion about some different times of, different times of foam that you can fill the tank into abandon it. But they just haven't got that far yet. We're still working with some vendors.
Process is already started. We're going to keep going as if we're going to get it done next year, though. Is that the plan?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. All opposed say nay. Motion passes. Quarterly Fiscal Health Report. Finance Directors Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know you've all been dying for this presentation this evening.
Well, we've been waiting.
It does make me hungry, all the pie charts.
They are cool.
I'm sorry, it had to be said.
Tonight's discussion with all these grants and everything that we've got moving, my head is already into next year's budget. I know that some of you have heard some of this information as I presented on, of course, the budget itself when it was adopted and then during the first quarter. I think for the benefit of our audience members and the people that are listening, I'm going to go over a bit of this information again, and also maybe as a refresher for you and for you, Mayor Hancock is our new mayor, although I know you've been involved in the budget process all along. So this is the second quarter, and I apologize, that says Q1, first typo I've noticed. This is the second quarter fiscal health report, which covers the period from July 1st, '22 through December 31st. The fiscal year budget was approved by the council, and the total amount of that budget was $30,403.9. The city budget is comprised of 12 funds, including the general fund, enterprise funds, and fiduciary funds. And there's 31 divisions within the city government that we track the finances on. Our overall capital expenditures totaled just in excess of $13.5 million, with $6.6 million of that offset by grants. And we'll have more grants to come, it sounds like. Starting with the general fund, this makes up approximately 29% of this year's total budget and has the largest budget within the city. The general fund manages our operating, most of the city's operating accounts. And it's used to accounts for the revenues and expenditures of most of the tax-supported activities, which would include items like our police department, our streets and alleys, our fleet department, IT, administrative services, municipal corps, and community development departments, just to name a few. Our largest sources of revenue are, for our general fund are sales and use tax, mineral royalties, severance taxes, and fuels tax. We also receive a direct distribution from the state for over-the-cap mineral royalties, and we typically try to reserve that money as one-time expenses for capital projects and purchases. At the close of the second quarter, the general fund reflected a negative balance of $674,115. Much of this is attributed to the completion of two large capital projects, of which a portion of that we were waiting for grant funding to come in, and we did receive it in January of this year. That was the North Federal Decorative Lighting Project, and those project costs were $561,000. And then this, we did again receive that in, in January. The second large project was a Sunset Park Playground Improvement with $75,000 spent in the first quarter, second quarter, in the first quarter, excuse me. And additionally, we budgeted for a crack sealer, and that was also purchased in the second quarter. I know that number sounds like a really scary number. This period last year, the fund closed with a positive balance of $143,525. So with me having trouble bringing this number to you, I also did a fiscal health report through January 27th, and I will give you those numbers as well, so you can see where we've changed since December 31st. I conducted that financial review, and the general fund was sitting at a positive $512,421. So it swung almost, well, a little over a million dollars in just a month's period of time. That's because we received the reimbursement from YDOT for the TAP grant for North Federal, and then we also received our second distribution of direct distribution funds, supplemental funding from the state in January as well. So you can see the value of supplemental funding to our budget and how that helps us. As a reminder, the budget was approved to transfer $818,000 from our cash for operations. So right now, we're sitting at about $512,000 to the good and just keep our fingers crossed that we're managing well, and hopefully we won't have to make that big transfer at the end of the year. Are there any questions on the general fund at this point? Yes, sir.
How is our sales tax projection doing?
We are exceeding our sales and use tax projections in approximately, our use tax is down, but our sales tax is up, and we're about $306,000 ahead of our projections in sales and use tax.
Thank you.
And those numbers will also be presented in the weekly report this week. We just received another check just this week for that, so.
Thank you.
So moving on to the airport fund, the total budget for the airport fund is $6.8 million, with 6.2 of that being in capital projects. The airport fund closed the quarter with a positive balance of $190,034 in revenues over expenditures. And this is primarily due to an unbudgeted sale of airport property up at the airport industrial park. And we also received a $75,000 grant reimbursement for CARES Act funding to help offset the cost of operations. The approved budget for the airport included a transfer of cash for $237,377 to support operations. So we are doing well, and the airport fund is at the close of the second quarter. During this period last year, this fund closed at a deficit balance of $20,650. The balance on January 27th, when I conducted another fiscal analysis, was $99,963 to the good. The next fund that we'll take a look at is our water fund. Our annual budget for the water fund is slightly in excess of $3.1 million. This was a decrease of 10.8% over last year's budget. There is $344,000 in capital projects proposed this year. The fund closed the quarter with $55,189 in revenues over expenditures, so we did finish with a positive at the quarter. And this budget was approved with a transfer of $319,000 to cover capital projects. And we have limited our capital projects this year in the water fund. The largest budgeted expense will be the completion of the Cowboy Lane, Quiver Lane Water Project, and improvements to the bulk fill station and improvements to the carbon feed system at the water treatment plant. Last year during the same period, the quarter closed with a deficit balance of $62,000 and some change. A financial review of the budget through January 27th shows a positive balance of $103,311. I think it's important to note that that's what we're making in our water fund as of six months into the year. We have millions of dollars of capital infrastructure projects planned over the course of the next several years. So we may be looking at water rates. We will be looking at water rates in some upcoming meetings. On the wastewater side of things, the annual budget for that fund is $3.1 million, and this was a 13% increase over last year's budget, particularly due to all of the improvements that are going on at the wastewater treatment plant this year. Some of the major projects budgeted in the fund include the Mesquite Sage Drive Sewer Replacement Project, and again, continued improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. This fund closed the quarter with $61,000 in revenues over expenditures. And this budget was approved with a transfer of $694,000 to cover our capital projects. Last year during the same period, the quarter did close with a balance of $62,093. Very close. We're at 61,079 compared to 62,093. Really close projections there. As of January 27th, the budget balance was $58,663. And the sanitation fund is typically one of our healthier funds. The annual budget for this fund is $3 million, just slightly in excess of that. And major plan purchases included a new sanitation truck, a compost screener, and a recycle truck. The fund closed the quarter with $40,973 in revenues over expenditures. And this budget was approved with a transfer of $675,160 to cover operational and capital. Last year during the same period, the quarter closed with a deficit balance of $71,107. And the January 27th fiscal analysis showed that this, this account is sitting at a positive balance of $104,817. And the last fund that we'll take a look at is the air service fund. This is primarily funded by the half percent economic development tax. At the close of the second quarter, the air service fund budget reflects a balance of $539,245 in revenues over expenditures. We have not yet received our invoices for air service for the months of October through December, so we're still waiting for those. And last year's closing balance during this time was a deficit balance of $95,278. So this really shows the value of that half percent economic development tax and how it is helping our air service in Riverton.
I think you have the you've got, that's through September 30th. Yep, I think you'd.
Okay, I apologize. I will update the information and post it on our website. And it is $539,245. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I obviously need a proofreader. I just want to extend my thanks to the staff, the city staff and the management who's worked so hard for us to keep our budgets and stay within our allowable limits. And thank you for your work and approval on helping us keep operations going. And I'd stand for any questions that you have.
Questions? Thank you. That's a ton of work.
Very well done. Thank you, as always.
Thank you, and I will get that updated right away.
Sounds good. Well, and it's, the, the one that's on the website is correct, July 1 through December 31st. It's just the one that's up there is.
On my PowerPoint.
Is through September 30th, so it's all, it's correct.
It's correct?
Website, yeah. Don't worry about it.
All right.
I just, I, I'd been looking at this and listening to you, and I hadn't been looking at that, and that was, I started looking at it, and I was like, wait a minute, there's different totals.
The one time you look up, yeah.
I know.
This is the PowerPoint that I prepare for you guys, so it should be accurate all along.
Yes, it, it's, it's good in here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Council Committee reports. Council Members Roundtable. Anybody want to start? I mean, rather than just me unilaterally deciding the order, anybody just so bursting with something.
I will. I, Tim asked me to go to the Fremont County Violence Against Children, I think, was the meeting called. It was at the Child Advocacy Center, and Chief Romero and city administrator Kyle Betterfield were there, but it was, it was a really nice meeting to have all of Fremont County law enforcement. But it was, it was a really nice meeting to have all of Fremont County law enforcement there. And Sam Tower is our chamber director. His wife, Kimber Tower, is the new cha- child advocate director out of the new center. And it was, um, Rick Brannon, who is head of all of the Rappahoe Six Thirty-Eight Contracts Health Services, was there. And I had a nice visit with him after the presentation was done and thanked him for all of his work getting this done to protect the children. And it's available for everyone in Fremont County, not just the tribe, which I think's a great service. And then I also got to do a tour afterwards with Chelsea Green to see the intake and the process with the kids. So that was really nice. And then one of my old students, Joanne Makeshine, was there. She works for the tribal police and stuff. So it was just a really interesting meeting. I was glad I went and I looked to find out more information in the future, so.
Good, great. And I think there's been some work towards getting MOU between the city, the county.
I'm gonna let the people that know what they're doing deal with that part of it. I just liked visiting with people from around the county, so.
Good, good. Well, thank you for that report. All right, might as well go, we'll just go around this way then. Councilman Larson?
The only thing I have is, um, we attended the airport meeting on last month. And we continue to load people and facilitate the transportation. But we're still at two flights, one in, one out. And that's still, it's not an equipment problem, it's an operator problem. And, uh, but the one thing that's important, we're getting new equipment. So you can't complain about not being screened properly, because we've got new equipment coming in and, uh, so act accordingly.
Good. All right, Councilman Pronto.
Well, Your Honor, thank you. Um, since the last time we met, um, I had the opportunity to go to the, the WAM conference in Cheyenne. And it was a little interesting, um, travel weather-wise, but, uh, we all got there. I, I took my car, got a little bit past the rest stop towards Casper and said, yeah, this isn't gonna work. I actually turned around, came home, caught my truck and then made the trip again. And it was, uh, that decision was, um, was, um, really notable on the trip home where.
Was that your electric, electric car?
Pretty much. Uh, every, every road in Wyoming just about was shut down, so. But while there, it was, um, kind of one of the highlights was getting welcomed by our House of Representatives. And, um, Kyle, Mr. Mayor and I were, were able to, uh, to spend a little bit of time in the Capitol Building. And we attended several discussions on, on, um, and, and as well as training and different presentations at WAM. It was, uh, really important to go and to be, um, to show representation for our city. There, there are some Senate files that are being considered that will directly impact Riverton. And those are really cool and it's great to be a part of that process. In addition to that, um, do you want the number?
Go ahead.
Lindsay and I last night attended the rec board meeting. And it, it's kind of one of the, the more fun rec board meetings, because we have kind of a, a pile of money. And, uh, it, it's a decent-sized pile. And we're able to distribute those funds to various groups in the city of Riverton and, um, in Fremont County. And this year, we distributed two hundred and six thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty cents, which is huge. I mean, it's everything, um, from bats and jerseys or whatever balls for our kids to other projects around our community. And it's, it's just a great way to see those funds going back into, um, our community and to help our kids. So that was really, really neat. I also wanted to thank staff for all the snow removal that's going on around the city. I know it's tough and in front of my house, you know, we talk about the snow. But this time of year, it kind of melts a little bit. And then it freezes into these enormous ruts into which cars fall into, uh, never to be seen again. So, uh, getting those, uh, snow, um, getting the snow equipment out there to remove some of that is, is really great. And thank you, Brian, you and your staff. Appreciate it. With that, sir, I'll turn over the remainder of my time.
Thank you, sounds good. Councilwoman Borders?
Your Honor, uh, first of all, at the mayor's request, I went to the chamber meeting. I think it's because Christie was gonna miss it.
He's scheduled to be at eleven for both.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes you just can't do it all. So, um, I went to the chamber meeting, it was really interesting. And, um, they talked a lot about the Sugar Beets, uh, program that they had last summer, the concert series. Um, they're in need of volunteers. I'm gonna talk a lot about volunteers tonight. Sugar Beets needs help. That evening after the chamber meeting, I went to the Riverton Community Foundation, uh, forming meeting. Uh, they're trying to form a foundation that can kind of be a central location for funds to be distributed. And it's really exciting, if anyone's heard of the Lander Community Foundation, this would kind of be set up like that. And, um, I, I thought it was really exciting. So if you're interested in that, you can get ahold of the chamber and they can let you know when the meetings will be. Um, they also talked about, uh, starting a Soapbox Derby. And, um, all the things that are associated with that to help with tourism. And, um, they talked about possibly trying to fund a, uh, a racetrack at some point. Uh, I didn't realize how big Soapbox Derby is, but it's pretty huge. So it'd be nice to just have one more draw to Riverton through the Soapbox Derby. Um, the other thing is Paws. Of course, we talked about the adoption process tonight. And, uh, I just wanted to mention that they're always in need of volunteers, they need dog walkers. They could use somebody to go down and help get their kennels outside cleaned out and get, get them ready for the nicer weather, so the dogs can go out there. And then I just have to say, this community's awesome. The amount of volunteerism that goes on here is so inspiring. And, um, I would just like to welcome anyone that's interested, you know, just to jump in, because we, we love volunteers and, and there's a lot of different places that need help. So I think that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cox?
All right, Dean covered the rec board meeting last night. Um, I did go to the Edge meeting before this meeting, but the next one is actually next week on the sixteenth at six o'clock here at City Hall. First meeting was just kind of information to the new board and kind of getting them acclimated to the procedure. And, and so hopefully, next meeting we'll, we'll start to move forward with that, which is exciting to start the idea of opening of process to new ideas in town. The senior endowment meeting is also on the sixteenth next week. So we'll be meeting with Frank and Lori, who were here tonight. And, um, I wanted to mention a couple of activities, big in the town that have been happening. Speech and Debate had three hundred and sixty kids in town this weekend, uh, from around state. I didn't know that when you host, you're not allowed to compete at your own school. So that was kind of interesting. All of our Speech and Debate kids were just volunteering and helping around the school. But three hundred and sixty additional kids in town. Ronthon was the weekend before and there were, uh, there were supposed to be forty teams. I don't know if they all made it to town because of the roads. And then I heard that, uh, Little Lake is going to be hosting districts this year. So the last time we hosted, there were seventeen teams in town. So just fun youth activities that are helping support our community as well, that I'm looking forward to.
Didn't a couple of the wrestling teams, a bunch of them get snowed in and spent the.
Yeah, I was gonna offer my parents' house up, because they were stuck in Laramie when they were without hotel rooms, but they figured it out.
Councilman Bailey?
Okay, thank you. Um, I did not have any meetings since we've met. So it's been a crazy month, but didn't have any meetings, so, thank you.
Sounds good. All right, uh, city administrators report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, I just have a few things to run through. There will not be a force meeting this month. Uh, the committee felt that it was okay to forego that and then pick things back up in, in March. There will be an airport board meeting, not this Friday, but the upcoming Friday, so that would be February sixteenth at eight AM. There's a planning commission meeting this, uh, Thursday at five-thirty. And then we do have a, a public meeting tomorrow night at five-thirty to discuss the Riverton Water Master Plan. As a reminder, we're working with the Wyoming Water Development Commission, an office of, um, well, Wyoming Water Development Office, on a, a new master plan. The previous one was completed in ninety-seven. So we do invite the public and our elected officials to participate in that, as, uh, we've been working through that master planning process.
That's tomorrow here, what time again?
At five-thirty. A couple of other things that I'd like to make note of, um, this is Megan Sims' last week. And we're all really sad about it. So I think it's appropriate to embarrass her and, and say thank you for her service to the city. She started with the city about the same time I did and has been a good friend. But more importantly, she's been an incredibly competent employee for the city and has done a good job serving. So we are sad to see her go. We hope her next job is terrible and that she decides to come back to us. And I say that tongue-in-cheek, wherever she goes, she will succeed. And we're gonna miss Megan. Obviously, we're, we're worried about snow right now and, and snow removal. We appreciate the public comment tonight. Staff is working on a review of the policy. And we'll bring it back to you, um, in the next few months, so we can have public participation and obviously council participation on an amendment to the policy. It, it should be noted that, uh, recently, uh, the Public Works Department, through Brian's coordination, was able to partner with a third-party contractor to help with our snow hauling. They did provide two trucks for thirty hours. And, um, that cost the city five thousand four hundred dollars to, to participate in that. Of our thirty-five thousand dollar snow budget, that was fifteen percent, um, for thirty hours of work. Very valuable, but also, um, it does take a significant portion of our budget when we do that third-party work. I think it was the appropriate decision to make, because we had a lot of snow that needed to be hauled. And I think our crews were more efficient with these additional trucks that were available. And, um, just to follow up on Mr. Falcon's comments, um, while it is not in, in our ordinance, we do take seriously the public right-of-way and the safety associated therewith. And so, um, before people go and start working in the public right-of-way and, and moving snow, I think it's appropriate to work with Mr. Eggleston, so that discussions about liability and conflicts could be coordinated. The last thing we'd want to have happen is someone trying to do a good thing for their neighborhood and accidentally causing some, some damage to property or even worse, human life. So I think it's appropriate to coordinate that with our, our Public Works Director. I have a lot of things, I apologize.
Keep going.
But this is my last thing, I believe, that's on, no, second-to-last thing on my list. Transitioning from snow, this, uh, moisture that we've received is gonna cause, uh, extreme freeze-thaw events. And we're gonna see potholes. We already are seeing potholes around town and our Public Works Department is aware of that. Currently, what they can do to address that is, um, use cold mix. And then we'll have to come back and address potholes when it warms up. But we are aware that potholes are gonna be a problem this year. And we're gonna be addressing those, um, as a city and as a department. And then last of all, we did receive a nice letter from First Lady Gordon. She wanted to say thank you to the city for contributing to the Wyoming Hunger Initiative and the Food From Field Program. Basically, from our fifty-six permit, we are able to donate some of the deer that were processed to support the First Lady and her initiative. And just as a reminder, the, the Wyoming Hunger Initiative is the official initiative of the First Lady. And her desire is to utilize programs that are in place to help the eighty-six thousand Wyoming residents that struggle with food insecurity and twenty-eight thousand of our, our children. So she sent a personal note saying thank you for our, our efforts in there. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Betterfield. I will try to not repeat a lot of what's already been said. Had the opportunity to attend WAM, that was a really good opportunity. One of the things that was discussed and, and mentioned this a little bit, I think, at our, our last meeting, just when we were in recess, uh, that, uh, one of the big changes, uh, that we're going to have to deal with is when people are in positions where they're using public funds. So our positions, special improvement districts, school boards, uh, et cetera, et cetera, they are going to be required to receive training, uh, through the Department of Audit. The Department of Audit is still getting the program together, exactly what that's going to look like, uh, what's going to fit the bill, so to speak, for the training. One of the big questions that I enjoyed and I thought was fitting, uh, that was posed by the WAM members at the time was, okay, uh, governing bodies, school boards, they're gonna have to do this training, what about the legislators themselves? Which I thought was a very good question. But, uh, it is going to be something that we'll be, I'm sure, hearing more about. I would encourage those involved in special improvement districts, school boards, et cetera, et cetera, to, uh, visit the Department of Audit's webpage to find out more about it. And they will be updating it, as I understand it. And I think the easiest way to do that is just audit.yo.gov. And then as you come to the public funds at the top, and you can scroll down to Training Public Officials. And there's areas that you'll have to be trained in, fiscal responsibilities, depositories, meeting minutes, records management, reporting requirements, et cetera. You can look at it. So, um, they are not wanting to have this have to be something that's going to turn into a, um, big drain on the finances of the boards or on the members of the boards. So they will be trying to have, um, materials that will be available there that could be provided at no cost. Um, I also, as I understand it, WAM, uh, will be, uh, trying to make sure that what they do for their newly-elected boot camp that they have, uh, every winter and then continues on through the summer will also fit what they're requiring. So, uh, something that's important to know, if you're in a position and you're a volunteer, which that's where most of the work in our community is done, in these, uh, quasi-governmental organizations, you're going to have some new requirements and just to be aware of them. So, that's important and was discussed at WAM and I really appreciated the discussion. Uh, the next thing is, um, we had an F-CAG meeting, Fremont County Association of Governments. Of course, I think we had everybody there, had a few people attending by video, I think, uh, by phone. Dubois and Land, no, Shoshone, uh, didn't make it. We elected new officers, uh, talked about some different plans that we have going forward with the Community Service Block Grant. There's going to be some changes to how that is, um, how those funds are spent. In the past, the Community Service Block Grant monies come from the federal government to the state, to the county, have been distributed to different organizations within the community that fit the bill for what the grant requires in terms of assisting people, helping them get back on their feet, that sort of thing. And they're going to be changing, or at least the proposal is, for that to change to where the funds will actually be more directly, um, appropriated or not appropriated, but, uh, spent to support individuals that are in need from, uh, an organization that will be associated with F-CAG. That's still being discussed, what that's going to look like, if that's what F-CAG would like to continue going forward. There's been years of work going into this, but naturally, we've got new people coming in. There might be some, or direction back, what we've done in the past. So that we will have an F-CAG meeting next, next month or is it later this month? Am I confused? Well, I'll have to check my phone. Anyway, the next F-CAG meeting, we will be discussing it. I had an opportunity just before this meeting at two o'clock, had some folks from the Harvard Growth Lab here talking about economic development. Good opportunities there. We had a lot of people from the community, from Riverton, from the reservation, from other companies that were there. We talked about things like infrastructure and just what can be done to help encourage economic development in Riverton. Had some good discussion. I don't think there was anything that was taken away from it that was necessarily groundbreaking, but did have some good ideas that were brought up and that, uh, we definitely want to continue to talk about. Also attended the chamber meeting, uh, in the evening, the evening meeting. to talk about. Also, attended the chamber meeting in the evening, the evening meeting, with Councilwoman Borders. We talked about the Riverton Community Foundation. The next meeting on that will be held March 2, 2023, at the Wind River Heritage Center. If you haven't already gotten the news, Wind River Heritage Center will soon become, if it hasn't already, a part of the chamber, subject to some agreements in terms of the preservation of the items that are included there. So, that would be March 2, 2023, at the Wind River Heritage Center. We'll be talking more about the Riverton Community Foundation.
What time did you say?
5:30.
Okay.
Yes. I don't want to just go off on a lot of different things that I attended. I will say I've had a lot of discussions with people about homelessness and about the needs of members in our community that are struggling. And we've had some good discussions about that. Couple of things that are coming up, a couple of ideas that we're still tossing around, trying to explore. In case you're interested in that topic and want to know more about kind of what's going on, different efforts being made in the community, feel free to reach out to me. I can point you in different directions. But I do think we've got a couple of ideas going forward, just how we can help people, how we can better keep our community a place where we're going to take care of each other. Other than that, maybe more on a personal note, but it is a community note as well. Judge Roberts, Wesley Roberts, who's the Riverton Circuit Court Judge, who served in that position for many years, retired this last week and is no longer the judge for the Riverton Circuit Court. I miss him. I feel like he was a... He's just a good person. He was actually my neighbor for some time. And really enjoy associating with him and with his wife, wish them luck in retirement, and appreciate all their years of service. Also, looking forward to another classmate of mine, Judge Dan Stebner, who has now taken office as the Riverton Circuit Court Judge in Riverton, and appreciate his work and really excited to be able to work with him and look forward to him judging fairly, wisely, and just being someone who I've known for years is just an incredibly good person with a good head on his shoulders. So, that is it from me. Executive session not needed? Good. All right. Well, anybody have any objection to adjourning? All right, and we will stand adjourned at 8:55 p.m.